Lori. Bruce. Charles. Doug.
It's gonna be nice, right?
It will be nice. This is a nice event. All right, Brooke, are we ready? All right, welcome everyone. We appreciate everyone being here and thanks for everyone coming out. So tonight, the Friends of the Library along with the PACC present Meet the Candidates 2023, the City Council Edition. Just as a reminder, we'll be back here on Thursday for the Mayor's Edition. And we're looking forward to that night as well. Also, the election February fourteenth, so everybody get that on their calendar as to why we're here. So please make sure everyone gets out and votes. If you're not here, so this is gonna be on a link, actually. And so this event is live streamed on Brooke Rouge's YouTube. So to get the link for that, you can go to the Facebook page of the PACC, or you can go to the city website to get a link to be able to watch this event. And then this event will be posted online after we're finished. So I'd like to thank Brooks Digital for broadcasting this for us tonight. So thank you, sir, very much. The campaign material for each one of the candidates is on the back table. So as you leave, grab something from that if you'd like for each one of the candidates. After this event, we'll have refreshments and you get the chance to meet one-on-one with each one of the candidates. As we all know, this is a very important election season, especially for the Mayor's race, the City Council race, and of course, the Chief Police and the City Clerk. So I ran back in two thousand thirteen, sat at this very table, so I don't envy any of you. I'm gonna be tough. No, just kidding. But just get ready, we've got a lot of questions for you, okay? And so this is a very important race this year, so we're glad that everybody's out. We're happy to have, if you're online, you're watching us, we welcome you. And most importantly, the most important message I can say is you have to vote. If you wanna say, you've gotta vote, so please show up to the polls and vote on February the fourteenth. I know it's Valentine's Day, so get your hearts and flowers out of the way and then go vote. All right? All right, so ladies and gentlemen, we have some ground rules, so I'd like to go over those ground rules with you. I'm gonna give you a question, and you have two minutes to answer, okay? After two minutes, we'll have a timer, she'll time me when it's up, we'll pass the microphone to the next in line, okay? This is a positive, Meet the Candidates session. This is not a bashing session. We're not here to push buttons or to point out everyone's faults. We're here to meet the candidates, we're gonna ask you the questions on the platforms that you're running on, and just answer truthfully, okay? And then keep it at two minutes, I'll give you a fifteen second warning to finish up, okay? Any questions? Okay, so first mic, let's see if the microphone works here. And we're gonna start with Lori Seaver. Testing. It'd help if I turned it on. Okay, Ms. Seaver. Oh, by the way, if, after with the questions, if we have time, we've asked the audience if they wanted to have a question, to put it on three-by-five card when you come in. If we have time, we'll get to those three-by-five cards, okay? All right, first question, Ms. Seaver. Why do you want to hold the office you're running for? This question should be answered in two minutes. Why do you wanna hold the office you're running for?
Why do I wanna hold the office? Uh-oh, is that working? Oh, now it's working? Okay, good, okay. First of all, my name's Lori Seaver, I've lived in Pryor for thirty years, I've raised four children, I've taught in prior schools for thirty years, I've served on the park board for sixteen, and last year in January, I was appointed to council. I want to continue, I would like to be reelected because I would like to continue serving. I felt like when I served on the park board that I had an impact in the city parks and other areas in the city. When I was asked to go to council, I said, gosh, I don't know, I don't know, I've really enjoyed this. But if I can have an impact on the city through council like I did in park board, then I would enjoy serving. I feel like that to continue serving, I would bring balance to the board. I feel like I know what it's like to live here, I know what it's like to raise kids here. I know what it's like when my daughter and granddaughter came to visit on Saturday, and she's like, well, what can we do? Well, we could go to the park, but it was really windy and cold. I feel like after teaching and living in Pryor for thirty years, that I know, well, I know what it's like to be a parent, I'm learning what it's like to be a grandparent. I feel like I know what's missing in the city of Pryor and what we need to make our city great. Anyway, so yes, I would like to continue, I'd like to continue to serve the family, not just the people in Ward Four, but the city, having impact in the city.
Same question. Why do you want to hold the office you're running for?
Well, to start off, I've lived in Pryor sixty years, I've lived in Ward Four for thirty years. I graduated Pryor High School in nineteen seventy. I worked for GRDA Police, which was, started out as a Lake Patrol and changed to police. I worked there twenty-six years. I started as patrolman, went to Assistant Chief, and then went to Chief. I think this will help a whole lot in dealing with the two biggest departments, the police and fire, because I'll be familiar with them, I've dealt with both of them quite a bit. I was on the City Council from nineteen eighty to nineteen eighty-eight. I was Chairman of the Sanitation Committee, Chairman of the Building and Maintenance Committee. And we built the first fire station, first building the city's had, which is down in Nathan Elliott, since Graham gave us the money. We also bought the old GRDA building and put the police station in it. So we've done quite a bit of things, but I've worked with three mayors during that time. And I didn't work for any of them. I think that councilmen should have their own ideas, check their out, their own things, and vote that way. This voting yes, yes, yes has got us in a bind. Oh, I left off sanitation committee, I forgot about that one. When I came on, the city had sanitation. And we went through the process and got rid of, got a private carrier, and it's making it cheaper for us and easier, too. I guess that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Trammell, if you could, guys could speak up a little louder in that microphone so that Brooke can get it through the live feed, that would greatly appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Again, my name is Charles Trammell. I am a native of Mays County, I was born and raised in Rose. I'm a nineteen eighty-five graduate of Pryor High School. I graduated from NSU in nineteen ninety-one with a degree in accounting and finance. And I have my master's degree from the University of Florida, master's of business administration from the University of Florida. I left Pryor in Mays County in nineteen ninety-one and moved to El Paso, Texas, to start what is now a thirty-one-year career with the United States Army as a federal auditor. And it's during that thirty-one years, I have had the opportunity to audit every aspect that the Army spends its money on, from military construction projects to everyday operational projects, personnel management, payroll, financial statements. And it's that thirty-one years of experience as an auditor that led me to run for City Council. You know, there's been a lot of questions, and it's just that questions on the spending that the city of Pryor is doing, you know, right now. And the best way to answer that is to get in there and look at all these government operations, all these city operations, and just do an audit, an end-to-end business process audit, to really look for efficiencies, effectiveness, and quite frankly, if there's been problems, don't, and this is the purpose of real purpose of an audit, don't just focus on the problems at hand, but we've got to look at the internal control breakdown that caused those problems. And we've got to build internal controls to make sure future problems don't happen again in the future. But again, my primary reason to run is as an auditor, and I hope everyone understands that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Again, I'll refresh the question. Why do you want to hold the office you're running for, Mr. Barham?
You don't mind, I'm gonna go ahead and stand up, though I can kinda see everybody in the back also. My name is Doug Barham, I'm running for City Council, Ward Three. Reason why I'm running, it boils down to one word, serve. Serving my community. I love to serve people, I love to serve and help people, it's the way I was born and raised. I was born in Claremore, please don't, and raised in Claremore, so don't hate me on that. But I've been a prior, I moved my family here and I've worked here, I've been in law enforcement twenty-seven years, I retired the year before last, in twenty-one. And I've been blessed to be able to work under Dennis Nichols for almost twenty-two years, right at twenty-two years. And I worked, it was a great department, and I look forward to seeing the department move forward, but now that I'm retired, I want to continue to serve. That's what it boils down to. The question is, why do I wanna run? To serve the community. And I can do that, I have the experience of investigative experience, I retired as a detective sergeant, as a supervisor of the detective division, I have supervisor, I've been a supervisor in every facet possible. So it boils down to service and serving my community. I've served in my church, I've served in the community, I've been FOP president, Fraternal or Police President for our union, I know budgets, I've worked with auditors, I've worked in all investigations with the Attorney General's Office with accountants. So I know budget, and it boils down to accountability, it boils down to checks and balances. That's what our constitution, our United States Constitution was based on, checks and balances. We're a local government, and it starts from the mayor all the way down to each city council member that's on the council. So it's very important that we have checks and balances to be able to represent the citizens of Pryor. My family and I have been here, and we were born here for, or my daughter's been pretty much born here, and Pryor is our community, and it's where it's gonna stay, so.
Well, hi, my name is Autumn Graybill, I moved to Pryor in two thousand eleven, I am married to Gilbert Graybill, who was born and raised here in Pryor. We have two sons, I have an eighteen-year-old, is the oldest, and he actually went and registered to vote the following Monday, he turned eighteen. And then we have a nine-year-old. And this is home to me, this is, I love this community, yeah, I'm from Broken Arrow, but this is home. Broken Arrow is my parents' home. So while the city has made great strides in moving us forward, I think my experience as a business owner and working both in the customer service and in the construction industry would be a great asset to our city. I know that the town has become what it can become with the proper leadership, and I wanna be part of that. However, we do, we need individuals on the council that are gonna ask questions, and they're going to discuss issues that need to be made and make an informed decision, individuals who will review the matters before they, in detail, before they become an issue, and instead of just passing them through, trusting what one or two individuals are telling them, but actually investigate it and research it and make an informed decision. I'm tired of just status quo. I wanna, I wanna see people in the office that are going to do their part for the citizens of Pryor Creek, and I feel like I can be that person.
Okay, thank you. Question number two. All right, Mr. Smith. What have you learned from previous experience or service that will help you in this role?
I think as far as the city's concerned, that I have served on the council, like I said, eight years, so I've run across just about everything you can get in trouble on. My law enforcement experience, I think will help, like I said, dealing with the police and the fire. And hopefully, of course, when I was on, we had a lot more departments than what we have now. And I'd like to see you get addressed, the street department, get it built up a little bit more. I don't know, I don't know what to have, what they don't have, something I have to check on. I guess that's it.
Refresh the question. What have you learned from previous experience or service that will help you in this role?
Thank you, again, thirty-one years of auditing experience with the United States Army. You know, I've been on multiple deployments with the Army all over the world, I've seen the best of humankind, and I, quite honestly, I've seen the worst of humankind. I have, anytime Congress passes a military construction project, we have to go out and audit it to make sure that construction project is within the parameters that Congress established. Whenever the US forces went into Bosnia in the nineteen nineties, we built twenty-one base camps. I did not audit one building on those base camps, I audited the twenty-one base camps. Over twenty billion dollars we spent, and I audited all twenty-one of those base camps. Again, payroll, human resources. If you can think of the government operation and what the Army does, I have had a chance in these thirty-one years to audit it at least once across the full spectrum, and I think it's that experience that will be very beneficial to the city of Pryor. I do wanna take a step back, and whenever people hear the word audit, they think it's something very bad. Federal audits today, outside the IRS, are very good things. We actually, our charter is to go in and look for ways with current business operations to spend the limited money more effectively and more efficiently, so we don't have to keep going back to Congress and asking for an increased budget year after year after year. So that's, you know, that's what, whenever I'm saying audit, I'm not saying this is going to be something bad. I'm saying we need to look at the end-to-end business processes in all of the departments to make sure that those controls are in place for the most appropriate spending of our tax dollars. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Kinda going off experience, investigative experience. I have spent fifteen of my twenty-seven years out of law enforcement as a detective or an investigator in some capacity. I've worked anything from basic petty crimes all the way up to homicides, and a lot of in-between, which a lot of those in-between were fraudulent, involving monies, involving banks, involving financial records, involving budgets, whether it be a coalition or a group or a club, there was embezzlement involved. So I understand money, I understand budget, and I understand where to find and look for, and if I don't, I always, I know where to go to to find out. So investigative experience is where I feel that I can lean on and use, and where I feel that I can put forth most of my ability. I've been blessed to do that, so.
So for most of my professional career, I was in the customer service industry as a supervisor or a manager, I did that for over fourteen years before me and my husband started our own business. After several years of being on the road and learning all the ins and outs of the trucking industry, I decided I wanted to come home and oversee the administrative end of that, as well as, so I came home and started working for a construction company. I feel like City Council, in a way, is partly customer service. We are representatives of the citizens of Pryor Creek, and we are here to serve our customers, which is the citizens of Pryor Creek, and giving them a voice. Over the years, in the customer service industry, I developed how to be a good listener and problem-solving skills in order to solve the issues that my customers had efficiently and provide excellent service to them, as well as digging for the answers and making myself available to meet their needs. As a business owner, I am extremely conscientious about our budget and not spending over our means. I do not make decisions flippantly. I weigh my options to find the best solution. You can ask my husband, sometimes I'll sit there and sit on a decision for a while until I know all the facts about it. So, you know, I make sure that our company is running smoothly and we have what we need to have to continue to run. As working, like currently working for the construction management company that I work for, we specialize in municipal building projects, more specifically municipalities and taxpayer funds and how those are used. So I feel like my knowledge in this area would be an asset to helping our city leaders navigate those complex projects and asking questions that they may not know to ask, so that we're not being taken advantage of for not knowing that information.
Ms. Seaver?
Okay, thank you. So first of all, I had the privilege this last year of serving on the Budget Committee, so I've learned a lot about the budget and how the budget works, I have a lot to learn, but I feel like I'm still comfortable with the budget of the city of Pryor. I know that we look at each line item and we look closely and decide, you know, are they over-budget, like for this time of year, are they where they should be, where are we in the year, are they over-budget, are they under-budget? You know, what can we do at that time? Each month, we look at this. When we talk about the budget, we talk about the situation we're in right now, I feel like the city budget, it was solid. I feel like that the funds were appropriated fairly, and I feel like that we're meeting that. I feel like the kink in the road came from the budget from the bond. And that's kind of, I don't know that those monies were budgeted well, as far as the city budget, I do. Now, is there, is there something we can do? Yes, we can, we need to look at the budget. For example, when we looked at it last month, there's one department that's more than two-hundred percent over their budget. And we talked to that department, and we said, how can we, how can we bring this down? At the same time, we have other line items that are only at thirty-four, thirty-five percent of the budget, and we're well over halfway through the year. And it's just really hard to tell from year to year. For example, there's a budget for the pool, we haven't had the pool open for two years. You have to closely examine each one. I don't think the budget would be the big issue if it wasn't for the construction that we did. Our city budget, the Budget Committee, the mayor, we look very carefully. But we do need, the thing I hear most in the public is the forty thousand dollars a year we spend for the budget to have somebody bring in businesses. We need to look at each of those. Should we use that money in other areas? At the end of the year, we need to say, was this money worth it in the budget? Can we put it in another area? Again, transparency, but also collaboration. All these departments need to come together, and we need to say, did you spend your budget? Did you not spend your budget? How could we do this differently? We need to communicate more between. Anyway. Thank you.
Okay, next question. If elected, what is the first issue you will address, and what will be your first action item for that issue?
Thank you. Again, I'm gonna focus on audits here. First thing I would do is get with the mayor and the City Council and come up with a plan, an audit plan on how we're going to begin auditing each of the departments, prioritize those departments to see which ones we should be doing first. But also look across those departments to see the business processes that are not just unique to one department, but are consistent with all of the departments, such as contracting. We really need to take a look at how we contract in this community, we need to take a very hard look at who is communicating with these contractors when the projects are occurring to make sure there's not a lot of fluff added, and that there is a lot of risk of that whenever you're, you allow the end-user to deal directly with the contractor. I'm not saying it has occurred, I'm saying it could very easily occur. And then, I saw something on Channel Six News the other night that was very intriguing to me. The city of Tulsa actually uses citizen committees to go out and advise the Tulsa City Council on certain things. And I think that would be wonderful as part of this audit, you know, this audit process that we're going through, I think we should engage with the citizens and get their input on, you know, what is the most important projects on their minds? What do they, what do they want to see this city do? And then, maybe, and I'm just throwing this out there, better streets, better sidewalks, and if we get that input, that's where we could engage first on an audit to see if indeed there is a way to take those limited resources and stretch them further to meet the goals, not of us, but of the citizens. Thank you.
Yeah. If elected, I can tell you the first thing, I think it's gonna probably be across the board, the first thing is to meet with the mayor and the other city council members and say, hey, what, the primary issue, and it's the elephant in the room basically, is the bond issue and the over expenditures and whatever. But something we all have to realize is, we as a council, if elected, and the mayor, we're elected to represent you, the citizens, to represent your tax dollars and represent them wisely. The mayor does the budget, the City Council goes through and holds the mayor checks and balances, holds mayor accountable, and as the mayor should hold us accountable, and the citizens hold the council and the mayor accountable. So it all boils down to, we're gonna hear transparency, we're gonna hear checks and balances, but that is very important that we do that, because that's what we were based upon as far as government. And if we do not uphold, and if I'm not held accountable as your elected official, then there's gonna be a problem, okay? Human nature kicks in, and you get complacent. I don't wanna be complacent. I don't, I've always told myself, don't be complacent in whatever I set out to do. So the first thing I would do would be go in and meet with the mayor and actually address the issues that the public is seeing and the questions that they have, and that's basically the police and library, police and fire department and library. We'll sit down, there's an investigation already started, and see that through. Make sure every penny and every dime is accounted for and where it's gone, and he'll be able to answer that, and we'll be able to find that. It's all documented, it's all there on paper, it just boils down to an audit. And then make sure, if there was anything over expended, whatever, to not do that again, to represent, and I'm not saying there was, I don't know yet, but to make sure that all your money and pennies and then every dime is spent responsibly, but I would get with the mayor, and we work as a team, and that's the main thing, is working as a team.
So I think you're right, probably most of us are gonna have probably the same answers, but mine would be transparency and accountability. And I'll continue to push for a citywide audit, as well as hold all departments accountable to the city by providing regular status reports and updates. I look at the city as a business or a company, and when you have a business or a company has a monthly, or in our case, a bi-monthly, meeting, it should be required that all departments give a report, period. We need to go to the place where we're being proactive and not reactive. And I think that that starts with every department being upfront and honest and providing those reports. The last few council meetings, there's been certain departments that have had nothing to report, and to me, that's not okay. We have other departments, like the library and the fire and the police, that consistently always give a report and let us know what's going on in their department. I'm not saying that anybody's doing a horrible job in running their department, but council and the people of the city need to know what's going on in order that we can prioritize our expenditures and be able to know what's going on ahead of time and not react to it belatedly. So more pairs of eyes and ears is what we need to work together as a team, and when all of the members together, work together as a team, I think that we will be able to accomplish a lot more than what we have.
Okay, thank you. So that our viewing audience will keep up with us, I'm gonna ask the question again. If elected, what is the first issue you will address, and what will be your first action item for that issue?
Well, the first item I would address again is the budget. And as I said earlier, we need to take a look at each one. I'm not sure if you know, but I'm guessing that you understand, anytime the city comes with a project, there is a bid process that goes through. And through the bid process, that's how we determine who's going to do it. Now, sometimes things happen, so we choose a contractor or somebody to do this job, then something happens that it winds up costing more. That was the big thing with the bond issue. I'll go back just to the tennis courts and the parking in front of the tennis courts. Again, it's over budget. We followed the bid process, it more comes down to liability. Who's liable for the mistake? Did the city make the mistake because we didn't have it up to code, or did the contractor make the mistake? Who's liable for it? There's a lot of mistakes that were made with the police, fire, and the library, that's a question of whose liability it is. Was it the contractors? Was it the contractors? Was it the contractor's responsibility to know how many feet a flagpole should be from a building? Was it, or was it the city's responsibility? There's a lot of liability issues when it comes to that. And when we're going to stay under the budget, so if we budget so much for the tennis court parking lot, to stay under that budget, we have to make sure those things don't happen. We need to make sure that the right hand knows what the left hand's doing. And that's kind of how we got a little out of control with the bond, with the current bond and the budget there. But the liability is something that we need to look at. We go through the bid process, we set an amount, we go through the bid process. If it goes over, we need to determine why and who's liable for it. And maybe we just need to more clearly write the contracts with the contractors. Maybe it needs to be spelled out more. I'm, I'm not sure, but it is looked at carefully.
Mr. Smith?
Well, as everybody has mentioned, the audit is the big thing. Until we have the audit, we won't know who messed up, who should be paying, not the taxpayers, taxpayers shouldn't pay twice. A lot of these change orders are due to that. And until we have the audit, we won't know exactly what to do with it. I'm retired, so I've got all the time in the world to check everything on the city. Well, we're going to be transparent, I better go back. In the springtime, when the crop is spawning, I might be harder to find, or in deer season. Other than that, I'll be, I'll be available. But a lot of these things have already been mentioned that we should do. But the big thing is the council. The council has to check out for theirselves. They're the ones that make the decision. The mayor suggests, the mayor guides, but the mayor doesn't vote unless of a tie. So the councilmen need to dig and to look and investigate before we get into this. I don't think the city budget, as Lori says, is in that bad a shape, but the fire station budget and, and police, that's another problem. But we'll get that addressed. That's the main thing, but the second main thing is, I'd like to see a swimming pool back. We got to have a swimming pool. And we've kind of let that go and we need to make that a priority. I've looked at the plans, I think it can be refurbished. I don't think we have to spend, you know, $10 million on a water park, let's just get us a swimming pool if the kids can get in. I guess that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Barham, you're next. All right. What is your vision for the city from a city councillor perspective? And how will you make that a reality? So what is your vision for the city and how will you make that a reality? Yes, I switched it up on you guys.
That's fine. Hey, I'm good with on the fly.
The reason why I switched it up is because a lot of the, the next question, we've answered a lot of that, so we may end up getting to the back of it.
My city's vision for the future, growth, economic growth. We've got one of the largest industrial parks in the world. I would love to see growth come to Pryor, but not just any growth, good financial growth for families to come to Pryor. You know, we don't, we don't want the riffraff coming in. Homeless issue's been addressed, but I can tell you right now, speaking from law enforcement's side, homelessness is in every town, not just in Pryor. It, it has skyrocketed. So, but what I want to see is, I want to see proper growth. We've got one of the best school districts in the state. We have, in, in my opinion, one of the best communities in, in the state. That's, and, and I'm coming from Claremore, and Claremore and Pryor used to be rivals. I am a Pryor right now. That's where I am. And I, and my friends that I grew up with hate me for that, but that's their, that's their problem. I'm, I am in the community of Pryor where, and that's where I'm, I will die here. But as far as my vision for the city, working with Pryor Main Street, huge deal. Mays County Hope, huge deal. They, we, we have the, the comprehension plan that was already passed years ago. Now let's stick with the vision, the five-year vision and goals of what that implemented in the comprehension plan. And we have Pryor Main Street, which are doing it in phases. And we can, Pryor's a great community, but we can strive to make it better. Not just us as whoever is elected up here, but also the community and the citizens in getting them involved in family functions, in family events and, and growth, and get people to want to move here. They see the school district, like I said, one of the best. I want them to see in the parks, we have beautiful parks, we have everything, and bring good businesses in for revenue of our city and tax dollars also, tax base. This way.
So my vision for our city is a unified community. One that we work together to bring about a quality of life to each of the citizens and that promotes happiness, health, safety, prosperity to each and every one of our, the individuals of our, our town. A place that's thriving, not just financially, but emotionally and physically. A place where our kids can play safe and our elderly are cared for and are happy. I would love to have a destination downtown corridor that would, would be something that, you know, be thriving and inviting and people would want to come here and spend time shopping and spend a day here. I'd love to see a skate park or, you know, something for the kids to do after school, you know, keep them out of trouble. The outdoor pool renovated and used, bike trails that are safe and clearly marked for people to use, changes to our traffic flow to make it better and safer. You know, a place where you want to be and you want to raise a family. That's what I want for our town. And these are things that'll help us grow and become a thriving community. And I will, I will commit to giving my time and my knowledge, my experience and my heart to helping make this grow with those that are like-minded.
Thank you, Ms. Graybill. Again, for our audience online, what is your vision of the city and how will you make it a reality?
Okay, so my vision for the city, my vision for the city is I would like Pryor to be a great place to live, work and play. I would like Pryor to be a place that you can raise your family and you can start traditions, that you can have gatherings, that we can have events on holidays. You know, I go to Salina every year to their carnival and their Fourth of July, and we need a place for traditions. We need a place where our kids can grow up and say, well, when I was growing up. We need to do that. We need to have other gatherings like we used to in Whittaker Park when we had the cowboy days. We need to do things to bring people back together and celebrate our families. It needs to be a great place to work. We need to have the resources to help people. I've, I've noticed there's a lot of people that want to work and there's not a lot of transportation. I see people walking in the sleet the other day, leaving Pizza Hut, walking home to the apartments behind the high school. We don't have any transportation. People want to work, but they can't get there. We need to, we need to look at that. We also need to look at for the best pace to play. The community has clearly said they want an outdoor pool. And, and we need to, we need to figure that out. We need to look into grants that we can get. We need to decide, you know, would an outdoor pool be good? Maybe the rec center needs an outdoor pool facility. Maybe, you know, there's something surely we can do. Maybe it needs to be funded with a bond. Maybe it needs to be in addition if the city wants it, maybe addition to the tax. Maybe also to play, if we would focus on our youth sports and we coordinate that a little bit better. And we had brought back recreational baseball, recreational softball and soccer. Everybody's gone competitive now. If we brought back, that would give our youth something to do in the summer and in the fall. We need to bring back the recreational sports and not focus on that. And if it takes a new complex, all the people coming to town to play our teams, would eat at our restaurants, they would stay in our hotels, they would play in our parks. It would be a win for everybody. Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
I think what we need to do first is concentrate on the swimming pool after we get this audit and get this money straightened out. And the second thing that we seem to have let go is the maintenance of these city buildings we have now. This one right here is terrible shape. I understand that the kitchen's condemned, the roof's got leaks, the wall's behind me is cracking, and I guess nobody has paid attention to that. And that's one of the things we need to look. I'd like to see safer streets and neighborhoods. We have got an influx of people, now, people call them homeless, not all of them's homeless. Some of them are homeless, some are looking to steal something. You know, that, we got to separate that group out. And I'm going to talk to some of them, ask them why they're homeless. I'd like to know, do they not make enough money to have a house to live in? Or do, you know, there's several, several questions here that you can ask. But we're going to have to have better communications with everybody. The, the police department and the council are going to have to get together because we've got two million immigrants coming from Mexico right now. And some of them's going to come to Pryor and how are we going to treat it? We can't house all the homeless people. We don't have enough room or money to do that. So we need to figure out what we've got to do to make all this a positive situation. And being I'm old, I'd like to see fireworks come back. I miss fireworks at the football field. I guess that's all I have. Thank you.
Charles, just, and I'll re, ask the question again, so the audience online, what is your vision and how will you make that a reality?
Uh, thank you, sir. I know I've been talking about auditing a lot tonight and I'm going to pivot from that for a while. I mean, one of the other pillars I'm running on is the need for an economic development plan in the city. To my knowledge, there is not one. I've called the city hall a couple of times and they, they said that Pryor does not have an economic development plan. And that plan would be the strategic plan for growth. And everyone here at the table tonight has been talking about growth. I agree, we've got to have growth. Pryor's got to have, to, to, to continue to evolve, we must have growth. That growth has got to be responsible. It's got to be, and I may be stealing your next question, Mr. Britton, it's got to be transparent to the taxpayers and it's, we've got to be accountable. Those are the three key things I focus on. But, you know, as I've been going door to door for the last three weeks now, and I talk about auditing and I talk about an economic development plan, the number one question I'm getting from so many people is, what are you going to do for the youth in this community? There is not one thing for our kids to do in Pryor. And part of that economic development plan has got to be, there has got to be a prong where we, we clearly define a long-term economic plan to bring stuff into Pryor for the youth to have something to do. You know, and again, the swimming pool, I fully support a swimming pool. We've got to have a swimming pool. I had a lady mention a mini golf course in the city, which I think is a phenomenal idea. I had another lady mention maybe a, a community garden somewhere out in, in, around the high school, since we're, you know, we're a rural farming community as, as a county as a whole. The thought was maybe, you know, our, our youth would enjoy learning to garden. But again, long-term strategic economic growth for the city. Thank you.
Ms. Graybill. All right. Interestingly enough on that question, since I'm the emcee, every single thing that you guys just talked about, the vision and the things and the activities, you probably wouldn't believe this, but a lot of that stuff is kind of like moving along. So I encourage you that if you become, get elected into your councilman roles, to get with the right people because there are plans, especially the fireworks, okay? In my new role, so just, just watch out. There's a lot of things. We all feel the same way. We all feel that this town needs something and there's some things that needs to be done and there's plans in motion to make that happen. So I appreciate each one of your visions. What I would encourage you to do if you get elected is to jump on board and let's support those missions and move forward, okay? All right. Question number, I was going to ask about this one, but no. I'm going to throw you off a little bit. No, we're going to stay on, we're going to stay on task. What is transparency as it relates to Pryor government and how will you promote transparency in your role?
So to me, transparency is open and honest about what the current issues and status is of each and every department. I realize that there are some things that can't be discussed publicly, but those are very few and far between. Transparency is being open with the people about things that are, you know, and not being secretive about stuff. We do have a city website and it is better than it used to be, but it can be much more. And I would actually encourage the city clerk's office to think outside the box and think up some solutions that would make it better. The paper has been post events and, and stuff like that. Pryor Main Street regularly updates their Facebook. The council meetings are posted on our city website. The Pryor Information Publication is constantly running articles about, both historical and educational articles about our town. I feel as a city, we could and we should do more to make sure that the citizens are aware of what is happening in our town. And that starts with each department. It is not okay, like I said before, that certain departments regularly give an update and other departments hardly ever give an update. That's not acceptable. As a business owner, if I, you know, had a monthly meeting and I had a department head come to those monthly meetings, month after month, and not give a status update, I probably would be finding somebody else to run that department. We need to be proactive, like I said, we don't need to be reactive and we need transparency to do that. We need to discuss issues before and concerns before they become an issue, before they become a major problem. By the way, did you know that right now, as of today, you can't go on the city website and find the contact information for your councillor? So that needs to change. I would like to also push for quarterly or monthly ward meetings where the, you know, citizens can meet with their councillor to discuss issues and concerns that they have.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think that's a great idea. And the last time we met, someone suggested that and I honestly had never thought about that, but you're right. I feel I, I honestly say, I can honestly say that I think anybody on council or in the mayor's office or department heads, I, I feel like everybody agrees transparency is important. There's not a lot of opportunity for that. I think that's where we're lacking. It's very hard. If you have a question about something, I mean, you know, you can get, you can do a petition from the audience and you can come ask the question, but that's a process. From what I've understanding, the citizens in Ward 4, they really don't know how to do that. But places to gather, I think, you know, we need to do more things like this, not just when it's election time. Like, like she said, we need to have opportunities for the citizens to gather and meet with their councillor and ask those questions, maybe in, and something not as formal as the actual city council meeting, but have a time and say that, you know, this is when we're going to meet and have it organized and that's where the transparency will come in. I don't feel like anybody's trying to hide anything, I really don't. I know that I'm not and maybe I'm being blindsided here, but there's not honestly anything that I wouldn't tell you the straight answer to. I just think the citizens don't have the opportunity to ask those questions.
Mr. Smith, for our viewing audience, what is transparency as it relates to Pryor city government and how will you promote transparency in your role?
I think probably the city, I don't say probably, should be an open book. It ought to be right out in the open, what you're doing, why you're doing. We are not running for an office, we're applying for a job. And if we're not doing what we're supposed to be doing, we need to be removed. And the council needs to take more time to question and ask and investigate and that will make transparency a lot easier. No secret meetings. I think there's lots of things, just if we had some different departments like we used to have, of course, we don't want sanitation, we got that covered, but street and alley, building maintenance, there's several that we could initiate that would help get more communication. And if you have more communication, you ought to have more transparency.
Transparency, in one word, openness. It's, you know, a transparent government is an open government to its citizens. The people own the city, the residents and citizens of Pryor Creek, they own Pryor. The city council does not, the mayor does not. We, you own this city and it's our responsibility to be open with you. Transparency, communicate, communicate, communicate. You have got to be in constant communication with the residents of your, of your city. I was in a meeting, I guess it was last week now, where Mr. Lamar, and I'm going to steal your, steal your idea, Terry, he said, you know, one of the things he wants to do in his ward is start holding ward-specific town halls with, with his constituents. And I thought that is one of the best ideas I've heard in a long time. So, you know, if I'm elected, that's definitely what I will do. In Ward 3, I will, I will schedule periodic, at least quarterly, town hall meetings somewhere in a facility like this or the library or the, the in a facility like this or the library or the, the Surtoma Center and invite all of my citizens to, or all of the citizens in Ward 3 to come and let's talk about what's on your mind, let me talk to you about what's going on within the city. And then obviously, I would go beyond Ward 3, I would open it up to anyone and everyone and I'd, I'm not that completely familiar with the quorum rules, but I think it'd be great to have, you know, another ward, two wards participate periodically to, uh, to come together and do the same thing. But again, transparency is openness and openness is communication. I can't say it any other way. Thank you.
I have to be the last one to answer this question because transparency, I mean, it's the same definition. You can't change it. You can't, I can't add to it or whatever, just like Mr. Trammell said, it's openness. Again, I'm gonna go back to what our constitution was founded on, checks and balances. And in order to balance everything out, you have to be open. Now, I will, the one thing I will say, even just as a regular citizen, I've never had a problem with reaching the city, current or past, anybody in the city, my city counselor, my, the mayor, any, I've never, I personally have never had any problems. People may have, but, uh, I can tell you this, transparency, I'm an open book. I was on call for 27 years of my career. My wife can attest, getting phone calls at 2:00, 3:00, 4:00 in the morning constantly and getting up and leaving the house to go address an issue or an investigation and go to a scene. It will, it will remain that way if elected. I will be transparent, I have an open door policy. And I'm not gonna lie to you, if, if I don't know the answer, I will find it if I don't know it. And I will do all my diligent, due diligence to find that. So, transparency is important to be open as, as a government. But, and what's sad is that we actually have to use that word, that our government has got to that point where we actually have to use transpa- the word transparency because it should, it should already be given, okay? And I, I've got to know each and every one, some of them I've known longer, but everybody on this, everybody on this panel right now, I have no doubt, is honest and transparent. Everybody on our council right now is honest, okay? Do we make mistakes? Yes, we do. But our goal is to learn from any mistake made, come together as a team and be open to the public, which Mr. Trammell said it. The mayor and the, and the city council, you guys are the ones that, you know, you're our supervisors, you're the ones that run us, okay? We don't run you. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Barham. I'll go back here and start with Ms. Seaver again. All right, we're gonna start ans- asking some questions from the audience. The first question we have is several of you attended the Pryor Main Street Candidate Forum. What are your thoughts on that organization and will you continue to support it?
You skipped my favorite question.
Uh, we're not done yet.
Okay, good. I just wanna go back to it. All right, I'm sorry, I was pouting and I didn't even listen to you. Okay, repeat that.
Here, I'll repeat the question for the viewing audience.
Sorry. You went off.
Well, you know, hey, there is a little bit of, you know.
Yeah. Privilege there, okay.
All right. Several of you attended the Pryor Main Street Candidate Forum a couple of weeks ago. What are your thoughts on the, that organization and will you continue to support it?
Okay, I was not in attendance, I'm still teaching and, uh, I had a training that day. I was not allowed, well, yeah, I, I could not leave school that day, so I didn't attend. But I've, uh, visited with Main Street before. Uh, I support them, I love that they're working with the Chamber now and with the EDTA. I think they're bringing a lot of exciting things. Um, I, a lot of thoughts that honestly, I never would've thought of. Again, although it, it, it is a benefit that I've lived in Pryor for 30 years, but it also kinda gives you this dull vision of what could actually be here. And when I've heard some of the Main Street ideas, they're so exciting. I, I would've never thought those. So, I feel like this, this group has a vision. I feel like they have resources that have never been tapped before. And I didn't realize that they were recognized, uh, not just by the state, but nationally with things that, with they're doing. So, yes, I would continue to support Main Street. I would continue, uh, to support that they work together so they can share, uh, with the Chamber their traffic studies or with the EDTA, any information they have. I think it's an exciting thing. Yes, you have my support.
Okay. Mr. Smith?
I also didn't make the meeting. I think Main Street's another advantage to the city of Pryor to get us more, uh, people to visit, spend money, get taxes. I don't know everything about Main Street, I'm gonna find out and I'm gonna ask some questions to see how it works, but basically, it sounds like a pretty positive situation.
Thank you. Uh, I was in attendance, uh, at the Pryor Main Street Forum and, uh, I, I was impressed with what I heard. Um, I like Pryor Main Street, I think Pryor Main Street does good work, great work for, for our Main Street corridor. Um, and I think they, you know, they need to be, uh, one of the pillars or, or fit into the, to an overarching economic development plan, um, for, for the city of Pryor. It's, uh, I think it's a great thing. One of the key things that I picked up on is just the amount of data that they do collect that goes on in Pryor Main Street. Someone can go there, if you're thinking about opening a business, you can go there right now and they will have all the, the, the square footage of the facilities that are, uh, on Main Street, the availability, the utilities, um, the, you know, the, the traffic that goes up and down at particular hours, not just for the day, but at particular hours throughout the day. I find that phenomenal, I like that. As an auditor, I love data and I thought that was phenomenal. But again, yes, Pryor Main Street, I support them, I like them and I, I think they are a key pillar in any economo- economic development that goes on in the city. Thank you.
I'm gonna trail everyone else, I'm a firm believer in the Pryor Main Street. Uh, if we have a city and it's not growing, what is it doing? It stays stagnant and slowly dies. We have got what Pryor Main Street and their plans, but not, it's not just Pryor Main Street, it's Chamber of Commerce, it's the EDTA, Economic Development Trust Authority, and it's also the compensation, the comprehension plan that we have already, you know, uh, in, in effect right now that, uh, we need to go back to and look at. And, and look at those five-year goals. So, all those, all those co- coalitions and Mays County, and I've left Mays County Help Out as well, uh, all those together, put together, along with the city and the board, and being on board, we're gonna have growth, we're gonna have positive growth. Uh, but if we're not growing, we're dying. And that, and that's something I don't wanna see and I've seen towns do it. But we just need to be sure to do it in a positive way and watch how the money's spent, get them with grants. And most of these coalition stuff, they're nonprofit, you know? And the city jumps in to help and with tax base when they can. So, uh, but, but I'm a firm believer in, in Pryor Main Street.
So, I was not there, um, I was actually writing invoices and writing checks, um, for work. So, I was not there, so I don't know exactly what was all discussed, but I will tell you this, um, like I told, said before, I am from Broken Arrow. I don't know how many of y'all have been to Broken Arrow within the last couple of years. They're downtown, Main Street. It was not like that when I grew up. It was like what we have. Um, and they have been able to work with the city and the, um, leadership in their town to make it what it is. And it is thriving. And it's a place that you wanna go spend your money, buy Christmas gifts, buy Valentine's gifts, um, buy lunch, just spend time there. There's skating rink and, and there's stuff for the kids to do and it's just a fun place to be and I want that so much for our downtown. It was part of the answer for the vision. I want a downtown corridor that people can come and spend time and spend their money and, and unite as a community together and whatever we need to do to help facilitate those, um, those departments or those, um, organizations as a city, we should be able to do that. And like I said, a lot of those can come from grants and stuff like that, not necessarily city funds, but I think that we as a, as, not just a city council, but, you know, a city as a whole should be able to support and get behind that.
Okay. Thank you very much. A lot of the questions from the audience are, a lot of the questions that's been asked tonight, so if I don't get to your questions, it's probably because we received an answer for it already. This question is, is what do you bring, what would you bring to the council that is positive and successful?
Well, I think my experience is the biggest thing. We've got a lot of things to do, uh, and talking about Main Street, if, if our Main Street can make it work, very few Main Streets in, in the city, in the northeast Oklahoma's surviving. And maybe our Main Street will get things going back and get it back like it was in the old days. I hope so. And I guess that's all I have.
Could you repeat that, sir?
Question is, is what, let me get it here, what do you bring, or what would you bring to the council that is positive and successful?
Thank you. Again, um, experience as an auditor, I think that was, that's just so key right now is, uh, you know, 31 years of government auditing experience, that's, that's, you know, very crucial right now to the city. Um, and I, I know I've talked about it in nauseam, uh, tonight, but, uh, you, any program, any department, any operation, any, any process, uh, you, I could probably go in, well, probably, I could go in and I could definitely audit that. And you, it's, but it's not just me doing the auditing, we've got to engage with the rest of the city council and bring, and let me try to help them bring that experience to them so they can also understand what we've got to do. I alone cannot audit Pryor Creek. I mean, I, right now, I, I have a, in my normal job, I have a team of four people who, who work for me doing the audits and, and, and ma- and that I'm managing. So, you know, it's, it's got to be a team effort, but the experience that I can bring on educating on how to do the audits is, would be the most beneficial thing I could bring.
What I bring to the table, um, again, experience, investigative experience, uh, but not just that, leadership. I am a firm, firm believer in leadership and character. Uh, I, and I hold, I, I hold myself high to a, to a certain standard and, and I expect my constituents to hold me to that standard and hold me accountable as well. So, uh, if, if we don't remain humble, you know, and be, and, and have that humility, then we become arrogant and we become, and we become broken, uh, in a lot of ways. And so, uh, experience in law enforcement, investigative law enforcement ability, character and leadership are the three main things.
So, heart, I mean, you know, number one for me, and experience, like they've said, kinda answered this before, but I mean, I view it as a, is, is, you know, our job is customer service in a sense, you know? We need to dive in and find out what the issues are and use problem-solving skills to get those corrected. Um, as a business owner, the person that wants the business to succeed the most is the one that has the most stake in the game, the business owner. I have a stake in the game. I want this community to thrive and to be all it can be for my family, selfishly for my family and for everybody else. That's, that's what I bring to the table. Um, my, my experience in construction, um, specifically municipality funds and making sure that, that the wool is not being pulled over our eyes because we don't know what is being told to us is correct or not correct. Um, so, that's just some of the things that, you know, I bring, um, to the table.
Okay. Thank you. And again, for our audience online, what would you bring to the council that is positive and successful?
Okay, well, my experience, uh, serving last year on the council and serving on the Budget Committee, uh, I feel like that that's very important. I've learned how to, to deal with that. But the positive part, um, I feel like I bring experience. I bring 30 years of experience working with the youth and working with families in this community. I feel like I'm very creative. I've watched how the, uh, school systems have implemented the after-school clubs, a variety of after-school clubs that have been successful and I can, uh, I have this vision for a way that the city can actually do that also, uh, and, and how we can get that started. Yes, we do need an outdoor pool, but we need a lot more than an outdoor pool. Unfortunately, um, I've also seen the side of what happens when kids don't have anything to do because I've had my own children that have been in trouble because there was nothing for them to do and, yeah. So, so I see both sides, but I bring the creativity, I bring the positive. I, I know we can impact the youth and we can get back on the right track.
Very good. Thank you. All right, we got two questions left, okay? Next question from the audience. You spoke a lot about transparency and this question, what does the council accountability mean to you?
It's a great question and I, I think we've kind of addressed it already, but, um, accountability is, again, we work for the citizens. We, you know, you own this city, we do not, the mayor does not, the department heads do not. The residents and citizens of Pryor Creek own this city. And our job as elected officials is to make sure your city is the best that we could possibly bring with the limited resources that we have and those resources are limited. Accountability, it's, again, it's being transparent and it's being open, it's, it's being responsible to you. It's, you know, we could just keep going on, but at the end of the day, it is understanding that we work for you and you, we need to be doing what you want us to do to improve and make the city of Pryor Creek even better than it is tonight. Thank you.
Accountability to me is, uh, well, it's checks and balances again. It starts off with the citizens electing officials. And we have federal, we have state, we have county, we have local. Um, and our char- our constitutions and charters were written that way and bylaws, everything. What, what, we have a city charter. We are held to a higher standard on what you want, just like Mr. Trammell said. The citizens and, and the, the voters are the ones that own the city. We're just representing you. Now, how we represent you is very important and we should be held accountable to that and held to a certain standard. And that standard should be listed, which it is, in our charter and our con- and what we should do, but in order to be held accountable, we gotta have an open door, you know? And which, uh, which I will if I'm elected. My phone number is publicized, my email's publicized better. I will say this, I gotta get better at text, I'm really good with phone calls. I gotta get better at text, it's, I think it's just an age thing, but I will get better. But, uh, my phone rings, I answer it. So, accountability is everything. Um, if, if you have a question as a citizen and as a voter, um, let us know, you know, let me know. And, and like I said, I'm not gonna try to lie and find my way through it. I'm not a po- I'm not a politician, I'm an honest man that wants to serve my community. And I will never be a politician because, uh, I don't like the word, but I do want, all I care about is serving my community. So, and, and to do that, I expect to be held accountable. So, accountability is checks and balances and doing, doing what's right with good character, so.
Okay. Mr. Graybill, for our viewing audience, in case they didn't, they're just now tuning in, which I just hope not, but what does council accountability mean to you?
So, council accountability to me is, is like Charles said, we work for you. Um, we are your representatives. And I think the best way for us to be held accountable is my suggestion earlier, to have monthly or quarterly ward meetings where we, as a city council, meet with our individual wards to find out, hey, are we doing what you're wanting us to do? Or is there questions? Are there concerns that you want us to bring before, um, the rest of the council to get answers for, get solutions for? I think that's, that's our job as a representative for the citizens. Um, so, um, transparency, being open and honest, I think it's also our duty, um, and I could be wrong, but to hold the other departments, um, of the city accountable. If, like I said before, if a department is regularly not giving us an update on what's going on, how do we know what's going on in that department if you're not telling us what's going on? So, as a council, I think it's our job to say, hey, wait a second, I know you said you don't have a report, but what happened the last two weeks? Did, I mean, how many ducks got rounded up or, I mean, I don't know, but I mean, it's information that the town needs, the city, the citizens need and the, and us as a council need. And so, not only is it our job to, to be held accountable to our citizens, but I think it's our job to hold the other departments accountable.
Okay. Thank you. Hope we don't have a duck problem.
So, accountability means to me, um, first of all, that I need to be easily accessible and I know that has been challenged and yes, it, it needs to be a little bit, uh, email and phone numbers need to be a little bit more. Accountability also means it is, uh, if I'm gonna, my due diligence is to look carefully at each thing when the agenda's sent out and when there's- When the agenda's sent out and when there's items on the agenda, I need to look carefully at that. Before the council meeting, if I have questions, I need to find out the answers to those questions before we're sitting at the council and voting on it. Accountability, accountability also means if citizens have questions, I need to answer. And if I don't have the answer, someone asked just the other day, why did the city spend $80,000 to have plans for a pool that we may not build? I know that answer and I explain that to them. So that's what accountability is. And, and I think that kind of goes with transparency too. But I think the citizens, citizens haven't known how to ask those questions, how to reach us, how to, and that's something that we need to address, but that's what accountability is. Because yes, the council works for you.
It's going to be hard for me to add anything else. Everybody's about answered it. I think accountability can, the counselor needs to be held accountable. I think that if the people will come to more meetings, come to council meetings, if I'm elected, I'll have an email, I'll have a phone number, and if nothing else, I'll have Facebook. That's where you get roasted. And, you know, every, everybody watches that. But, yeah, I believe that, that the people need to hold us accountable, not just, and we need to do what we should be doing. And if we're not, somebody's going to point it out. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Final question. Mr. Barham, you get to go first. Your favorite. In the event that you are not elected, how will you continue to work to improve Pryor?
I'll continue to serve. I've always had a servant heart. I was raised that way. My church, I've, I've served in my church and I still serve in my church at YPC. So I, I will find one way, shape or form to serve in the community and continue to serve in my church also both. And I'm really big with fostering Mays County. I've helped redecorate and remodel and reconstruct a lot of those apartments off the donations of the owner there that's been gracious enough to do that. I've been involved in a lot of, I've been involved in a lot of facets, not just as a law enforcement officer. And a lot of them, a lot of them I really didn't talk about and I probably should have tonight, but I was involved with, back then it was Hope Coalition. It wasn't Mays County Hope, they just changed the name, but I was one of the original board members of that. My, my wife and I both, and I've been, you know, FOP president, I've, I've held a lot of facets. So I'm going to continue to serve one way, shape or form. And I'll, and I have goals. I have future goals that I plan on in my life, you know? I'm, I'm a very goal-oriented person as far as work ethic. I was, work ethic was instilled in me from a very early age. Patriotism, work ethic and character and leadership, those are the important things that I fortunately was blessed with to, to grow up with my parents. So I will continue to find some, find somewhere to serve in one way, shape or form.
So I will continue to go to council meetings and continue to stay plugged in and reach out to our city officials, whether to ask a question or to give my input, whether they want it or not, I guess. But just stay involved and stay, you know, an ear to, to whatever's going on in our community. Continue to give advice from knowledge and expertise to the ad hoc committee to try to, to get a resolution for the over expenditure that we've had to deal with, with the, the bond issue and just continue to serve, you know, and, and be a part of this community and, and keep pushing forward and, and keep trying at it.
Thank you, Ms. Grayville. Ms. Seaver?
My question. I thought about this a lot.
Your question.
All right, so if I'm not elected, you know, that's because that's not part of the plan that God has for me, but I will tell you, my plan is to go back where I started 16 years ago, and that's trying to find activities for the youth of Pryor. I want to use my experience, the 30 years spent in the public schools and working with families. I still think I have a lot to offer. Whether I'm on the council or not on the council, I'm going to advocate for a, a, a position, an actual position, for somebody to be hired to do this. Because to do this well and to do, do it the way it needs to be done, we need to invest in that. And that's the only way. It, it's not going to be done through volunteers, so I'm going to advocate for that. Also, another thing close to my heart is the homeless. Anyway, so those are my two things if not elected. And the homeless situation, you're right. It is not unique to Pryor. And, and Pryor can't solve that by ourselves. We're going to have to get the state involved. We're going to have to get other resources involved. It's, it's not something, I mean, it's, it's a big problem we've got to get. And so if not elected, I still want to stay involved with getting something going for the youth and the pool and also trying to help with the homeless situation.
If not elected, I will continue to go to council meetings. I will continue to get on social media and question and ask. I will continue to call councilmen, that's matter of fact, who I'm running now. I've called so many of them. They've said, why don't you put your money where your mouth is and run? So here I am. Don't give it a whirl.
I think I did.
You may have.
I think I did.
Thank you.
Mr. Trammell?
Am I the last?
You are the last, sir.
All righty then. Hey, two things. If I'm not elected, I'm, I'm going to increase the amount of volunteer hours I give to the community. I, I admit, I have not volunteered as much as I would like to in the last few years. And the strength of any community is the amount of its citizens that are willing to step up and volunteer their time to make their community better. And, you know, just, even if I'm not elected, I will do that. And second thing I definitely want to do is stay engaged with my neighbors in Ward Three. Going door to door. I mean, you know, I, whenever I started this, people said, oh, you're going to hate going door to door and talking to people. I, I have absolutely loved every second of it. And even, even the people who have said, I'm not interested in slamming the door, the lady who, who, who closed the garage door and almost hit me on it, hey, that's okay. You know, I understand. But 99% of the people I have talked to are just phenomenal in this city and I want to stay engaged with my neighbors. And this is the last question, right?
It is.
Well then, you know what? I want to close out with one final thought for everyone here. First of all, thank you to every one of you for coming out tonight and listening and learning before you vote. That is the, the democracy working right here. And then I, I want to thank everyone, no matter the outcome Tuesday night, it has been an honor to, to run and compete with, directly with these two, but to be sitting at a table tonight with four great citizens of Pryor Creek who, who took the time to stand up and say, I want to run and try to help improve my city directly. Thank you so much to everyone.
Thank you. All right. So if you can reach down at the bottom and just turn that one off for me. I will tell you that in your responses for what you're going to do if you don't get elected, the PACC has lots to do. And so volunteering, when I hear volunteer, Yvette and I, like, what? We hear that? So we would, we would take, are voluntold for you, sir. I'd like to thank Carrie and her staff for putting this together. I'd also like to thank my staff, Yvette Barham and Taylor Rhodes for putting this together as well. And thank you to the candidates. Thank you for following the House rules and the, the respect that you showed each one of the individuals. And thank you, audience, in the questions that you asked was very respectful as well. So thank you very much. Now, if you came in the door, you got a ticket. So if you know, as you know, we have the Boat, Sport and Tackle Show that will be taking place at 10th, 11th and 12th at the Mays County Event Center. And we would like to give five tickets away. You'll get two tickets, one for you and one for an individual to go with you. So pull out your lucky numbers and we will make our first draw. The first number, you'll get two tickets, is 744574. Somebody's got that ticket. Going once, going twice? Man, we must have been boring, they already left. Okay, here we go. Last three numbers, 568. Right there. So Mr. Dunn, you get to go to the, see Yvette when you get done, okay? All you'll need to do is show up and bring your ID. We'll have you on a list there, okay? Next one, 558. Yes, sir. See Yvette and you can bring a lucky guest with you. Hopefully it's your wife or, you know. All right. Girlfriend? 563. 563. Right there. Nina, congratulations. You can bring you, our friend as well. Valentine's Day. All right, next one, 566. They must have left with 574. And let's see, 557. All right. Yes, sir. And our final ticket tonight is lucky number 565. Right there. All right. Again, thank you guys for coming out. And Thursday night will be the mayors meet the candidates, so we invite you all to come back out. And thank you so much. And thank you, candidates. You can enjoy some refreshments over here, some campaign material in the back, and then you get a chance one-on-one with the candidates. Thank you.